Everyone, thank you for coming to be here. Now come on in, just grab a chair or stand by the wall, whichever you like. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start our council meeting tonight. Uh, like I said, it's good to have everybody here. If I can get everybody to stand, we're going to have virtual pro-ken. Baron, please lead us into the presentation.
Father, Heaven, as we come to you tonight, we just praise your name, Father. We thank you for the blessings that you give us on a daily basis. Father, we thank you for the moisture that we've received. Father, we just thank you for little towns like Mewshu that we can be a part of and and, Father, we just pray that everything we do will glorify you. We just say we pray.
Thank you. Let the record show that we're all here. We have a quorum. And if you would join me, we'd like to have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may see. It, uh, let me say again, it's really nice to have everybody here tonight. It's at this time in our meeting that we're always glad to welcome visitors and receive public comment. And, uh, this is the time in our meeting when we do like to receive that public comment. But we're going to vary from that just a little bit. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to the chief, and I think he has a few words he'd like to share with us. Yes, sir.
May I ask, I'm having a real leisure to talk, Mayor, City Council. Good to see y'all tonight. I appreciate, uh, appreciate being able to do this, Mayor. We would have done this, uh, back in December, but obviously with the holidays and, uh, it's not the city council meeting wasn't, uh, able to do so since this, uh, outstanding event occurred back in, um, November. So if, uh, Lieutenant Parker and Officer Mendoza would have sat up here in the front with me. So Mayor, City Council, um, and then, like I said, this, this is a great honor and privilege that I get to talk to y'all tonight and present, uh, these two outstanding officers with this. So back in the morning of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, a nine-one-one call was received at around seven fifty hours. Lieutenant Parker and Officer Mendoza, and I'll give you the, uh, abbreviated version of this because I will probably not do it justice, uh, you know, even if I would end in detail. They responded to a medical call that was on the north side of railroad tracks. EMS at that time was not able to get across the railroad tracks due to the, uh, obviously training the way. By their quick action, by getting over there in a very timely manner, they took life-saving steps, uh, to, to save a twelve-day-old infant from choking and, uh, the baby was turning blue upon their arrival. The steps that they took during those, uh, first few minutes foreseeably and, uh, Gene and the other folks from the EMS can vouch for this, uh, most definitely saved that infant's life. So it is tonight with a great honor that I present them both, uh, life-saving awards, from myself and, uh, the city manager, Ramon Sanchez, both sign these. Officer Mendoza, thank you very much. I sincerely appreciate you. Lieutenant Parker, there you are, sir. I appreciate you. I also like to give you a ribbon, accommodation ribbon that you will wear on, uh, your uniform at your leisure. But again, I didn't do it justice. I don't know where Gene's at. Gene, if you'd like to say a couple of words, uh, you, you probably tell, tell, tell the event a lot better than I could.
Just very briefly, sir, uh, these two officers jumped into action, uh, even above and beyond their call of duty. Without them, uh, we would have had a tragic event. Their life-saving measures were definitive. Uh, they knew what they were supposed to do. They jumped into action. They didn't hesitate. They handed me a patient, a viable patient that I could then take to the hospital. Life-saving measures on both their part and, uh, EMS and our local law enforcement's cooperation goes together to save lives. So from Baby County EMS to both of you officers, chief to your department, your dispatchers, thank you very much for the outstanding, above and beyond call of duty.
Gene, I appreciate you. Don't forget an opportunity to thank y'all, but enjoy working with you. Appreciate your folks and enjoy working with you. It's an honor each and every day. So thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you.
Be assured that the, uh, the council would also like to congratulate you and pay how much we appreciate your hard work and your diligence and and it's, it's a very unique thing for you to be a part of the city family. And we want to, we want to also thank you.
Thank you.
Now, in our program, we're gonna move on to, uh, public comment. And, uh, we have a young lady here, uh, Lindsay Garcia, that'd like to address the, uh, council in regard to animal patrol and population. Y'all are welcome to stay or we understand if you need to go ahead and go, it's, it's your choice. So we're going to turn the floor over to Lindsay. And, uh, if you would step to the podium right there, we're glad that you're here.
Thank you for speaking.
Okay, we're gonna ask if you speak up. We don't have a microphone over there.
Can you hear me? Okay, so we all know about the problem with the cats. That we have a big problem in Mewshu, all over the country, of overpopulation of cats, uh, stray cats. Um, we do try to catch and release them, but that does not fix the problem. Um, releasing them somewhere else doesn't fix the problem. It just moves it to a different area. And it opens that area you took them from to get a new animal to continue the cycle of overpopulation. So there is a program called a TNR program, which is trap, neuter, and release, or return, return, which you track the cat, you take it, you neuter it, and you notch it's ear, and then you release it back into its own colony. So that colony starts to diminish, but it keeps other cats, like other new cats come, to come into there to re, to re, um, repopulate, and keeps the mouse, mouse problem down also in town. Um, so there's that. Um, it's not hard to track the cats, honestly. Um, I've been doing it and, uh, that's all I have to say about that one. Um, do you have any questions about that one?
Yeah, uh, is this a federal program? Is?
Um, they do, uh, have a program that is called alley for alleys, for alley cats. Um, that we can get in contact with and they could actually come to town, talk to our vets. And you do like, uh, see which vets would like to participate. And they could neuter them for, like it was a volunteer program. Um, and it would be fixing them as, um, like in a shelter situation. You, to fix them in a shelter situation is just you put them to sleep, you fix them, and you notch them. If you do it, if you, it's your own animal, they do full anesthesia and all that, but it's not as, it's a lot more cost-effective just doing it in a self-shelter situation and stuff like that. And it's a lot more humane to, and then instead of just either killing them or moving the problem to someone else's area.
You, uh, you said that you've been doing that for a while, catching them and releasing them and where, where do you release them to?
Uh, we take them to like the feed yards and barns and stuff, but like I said, it's just, it's just gonna keep going. Like, um, there's a bunch, like, at least twenty near my house. If I take them to a barn, that, that population's just gonna keep growing. But since I took that male, say it's a male, I took that male from this population, they're just gonna let a new male come in.
Another male will.
Yeah, because they don't have that male, that's the strong male, to take care of the population, population. So they're gonna let a new one come in and it just keeps going over and over and over.
Never fixes the problem.
No. And if you move them all over, then you have the chance of the rat population growing in that area. Which, we, we all live around fields, so, you know, we have field mice everywhere.
So who runs a program like this? I mean, I'm just saying for Mewshu. Who would come in here and, and do that and, and who's gonna pay for it? That's the main thing.
Um.
I mean, normally we have animal control within the city, and it's a tough position to fit.
Yeah.
We've, we've had several good ones come and go, but it getting them to stay is the hard part.
Yeah.
So, oh, I guess I'm asking, so how do we, what's the solution for this?
Um, this, the best thing would be like to talk to the vets, see who would be willing to do this. Um, to put, and it would just be taking time out of their day to, um, like set aside
So is that gonna be one cat at a time, or are they gonna have to be housed until they can do a, a number of them at one time, or how's that work?
Um, I honestly can't, don't know that. Um, they can do a number, a number of spays and neuters at once. Beans that it's, um, just putting them to sleep and fixing them. I mean, you can lay a whole table full of them.
Thinking about, I mean, if you're gonna get a volunteer, veteran, they're in to take up time to do this. If you can even find anybody to do that, they're not gonna wanna stop while they're doing it in their baby routine to do one cat. This is gonna be my guess. So, uh, where, where would these cats be housed until you had five or ten or whatever it's gonna take for them to, to do this?
Um.
That's my.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where, where is this gonna, where's this gonna go?
Well, I think to go on with, with what you're saying, I think that's part of our problem now is the fact that the general public doesn't want to pay for the cost of that. And it's difficult to ask the veterinarians to give up their time to do that and, and it, it becomes expensive. So if nobody wants to do that, then that, the problem's still there.
Exactly.
So, you know, I've been, I, I know what you're going through. I've been tracking cats at my house for years. And, uh, I'm in the relocation business. And I relocate those to different parts of the country. But, but you're right, it, it, it doesn't fix the problem. So, uh, I can't track that many. And, and the places that I take them get overrun after so long, so.
Yeah.
You mentioned TNR.
Yeah.
Yeah, trap, neuter, and re, re, return.
Release or returning out.
How much do you know about that program? Has that got federal dollars behind it, or do you know, or?
Um, this is, this is just the baseline, but there is a program that is alleys for alley cats. And they, they do, uh, work nationally. And, um, it's just filling out the application and seeing what they can do to come help Mewshu.
Okay.
Um, I know Lubbock is actually trying to implement, implement this over there. Um, my husband and I did take a tour of their facility over there. Obviously, they have a facility. Um, we actually want to open a animal, uh, no kill shelter here in Mewshu. Um, we're trying to figure out how to start that, but that will be later down the line. But that would just be like us trying to start that.
And I can answer your question. Uh, this is a nonprofit organization that has this. Okay. Uh, so as far as federal funding, there is no federal funding. Most of these programs are run through nonprofits. So that, that is a matter we need to know.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I realize you're talking so far mainly cats. I got a big issue with the dogs.
Yeah, the dogs, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't hear about the cats.
Yeah, that's, that's my next thing is, uh, spay and neuter vouchers for Mewshu. Um, they are actually, they actually help low-income families and, um, it's, you go and apply, they go through this whole list and you apply. And you can get your spay, your animal spayed or neutered for a lot cheaper. So you get the people that, say, are backyard breeders or just don't have the money to fix their animals. Um, that gets taken care of because the biggest problem is, uh, male dogs can smell female in heat up to a mile away. So if female goes in heat a block away, he's gonna come over, this one's gonna come over, and you're gonna have everybody come into one house. And it doesn't matter what you do, you're still gonna have them breaking down doors and everything trying to get to the female. And, cause they can't control themselves.
Right.
And so the spay and neuter will actually help that. Um, it's, there's a lot of benefits to the spay and neuters, um, for males, obviously, aggression and, um, roaming. Roaming is a big problem. That is fixed by that. And then obviously the health benefits for, um, like cancer. Um, the female's pyoritro, which is a pus in the uterus. Um, they can't get that with that.
So do you know what it would cost if you were to take a cat out to the vet here to get spayed and neutered?
Um, for a male, it would be about one fifty, I believe. One, one fifty. And for a female, probably about two hundred. Um, and you, for females, it's a lot more expensive because um, you think with the male, it's an institution about this big. And for a female, it's a full stack that they have to go in and take everything out. Cause it's just like having an hysterectomy for a female. It's a lot bigger surgery.
So in the city of Lubbock, on this voucher, what is the, the city of Lubbock, do they pay part of that for these folks, or how, how does that work? You know?
Um, they actually have a, um, like a contract with the vets.
With a certain location that?
Yeah. Um, this is only in city limits, like in the city limits. It doesn't go for the rural parts of Lubbock or anything like that. Um, it's just like in the city limits and it's for low income. You go through a whole, um, list, like you're on a list, kinda like the apartments where you are on a waiting list. And you get about, uh, a notice saying if you're approved or not. And we actually did that about five years ago when we lived in Lubbock. We had actually had a few of those done. And they worked really well.
So does the voucher pay for all of the procedure, or?
It pays for, uh, eighty percent of it. So say it's a male dog and it's a hundred fifty dollars, you'll pay anywhere from fifty to twenty dollars, or twenty to fifty dollars. Um, there are instances, if something goes wrong during the surgery, which I had with my male. Um, he was older and he, when he went under anesthesia, it's always a risk because they're going under anesthesia. Um, he tried to die on the table, so they gave him epinephrine. But that medication, um, to bring them back does not go on with this, so that would be out of pocket. So there are that, those instances, but it does take the initial, um, price of it down. So, I mean, if you have a healthy dog going in and everything, you have a chance of only paying twenty dollars.
So if, if we implemented a program like that, you know, I don't know that we could do an unlimited map in a year, but because at the end of the day, if city's paying for it, this is your money because you live in this city, then we've gotta look after it. But if we implemented a program like that, do you think you would see things get better around here? Do you think people would use the vouchers? And you think that maybe our animal control would see less of the workload?
I honestly think it would because, um, the problem is roaming and a lot of people, um, I know a few are pretty low income and with the COVID, it's hit their houses holes really hard. So getting it to where it's a two-hundred-dollar surgery, having a fifty-dollar surgery, that helps a lot. And it's easier to hold fifty dollars to, to the side than two-hundred when you know that it's good for them, but you don't have the resources for it.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
It's, you know, it's something what you're looking at. This is not the first time it's been brought up to us. It's not the first time we've looked at, uh, splitting your program. Uh, it comes down to what council wants to do, how much funding you wanna make available for this program. Looking at little city of Lubbock, basically you have the actual application in front of you, that they have filled out. I know some cities that do that. If an animal comes into your shelter and you pound, has to be spayed and neutered before it's released. And that is something, it's an option that we can look at. They know that every animal we come in contact with, we know for sure that that animal is gonna be spayed and neutered. I know where cities share some of the cost. And I know where cities pass the cost to the, to the customer, whatever the, the bill is. But I think the starting point will be those animals that we come in contact with.
And that does go back to the, why we want to try to open a no kill shelter here. Um, we do want to implement some of the things that they are doing in Lubbock. As far as before anything gets adopted, it has their shots and it has been spayed and neutered. And, um, we actually talked to them a few days ago. Um, they come in, they get held for seventy-two hours. That's the Texas minimum. Um, that gives their owners time to come find them or anything like that. But as soon as they walk in the, uh, shelter, they're given their shots. Uh, they're checked for microchips and all of that. And then after the seventy-two hours, they are taken to see if they need to be socialized or put into population for to get on the process of getting adopted. So they get spayed and neutered and then they get put into adoption. So they get spayed and neutered and then they get put into adoption. And they do, they actually did make a program for feral cats in their area that, um, are spayed and neutered, but instead of trying to get them to go to so, uh, actual households, they'll go to the barns and stuff. So they're still spayed and neutered, but they're not cuddly cats that you can go love on. They're feral cats that will go keep your mouse probably down in your barns and in your farms. And see if everything stays controlled.
So my thoughts about like this voucher deal is if we ever did something like that and when we have an animal control officer, by doing that, just putting the money there, do you think that we could use his time would be more valuable without having to deal with issues like this? And we could workforce taking care of itself, where he could deal with other issues, more code enforcement rather than animal control? Could we find a value in it somewhere, this basically what I'm getting at?
There is some value to it, you know, but it, it comes back to responsibility of that owner, okay? Uh, most of the animals we're talking about are owned by somebody, you know? So even if we have a program, it, it, what it comes down to is participation. How many of those folks are even on participation? You know? And we could, yes, it could make a difference. But I'd say, like I said, it comes back to ownership, that responsible owner. You know, if I, if I'm a responsible owner and I know that I have a, a cat, I'm gonna try to fix it. And how many people do that? A lot of folks do that. But the problem we're talking about is not your one or two cat household. And the next thing you know, you got a litter and another one and another one. And it gets to the point where they just turn loose. So it goes back to responsible ownership.
Do we have an animal control person at this house?
Sure we don't. We don't, playing the process of, uh, this.
What seems to be the problem of keeping one of those?
Your guess as good as mine.
They don't pay enough, uh, they get other opportunities, what, uh?
A little everything, you know, uh.
They don't like the work, what, uh, what?
Animal control, it's a, it's a hard job. It is. And it's one of those that we have to stay on top of it. The minute you loosen up a little bit, it could be overwhelming. Uh, we're also a small community, you know? So the resources, yeah, we're not gonna compare Mioshu to Lubbock. Okay? Uh, or other communities. It's not only, it's not only another problem in Mioshu. I've spoken to the surrounding communities and they had to say we should support you. And, and they all would tell you, it comes back to owner responsibility. You know, even.
Yes, Chief.
I was just, once the city manager's done, I was gonna say something, but well, if I can't.
You know, uh, uh, you know, let's put it on our citizens, let's be responsible about these animals, you know? Don't turn them loose after five o'clock, as you know, that animal control officer has come home. You know, let's not do that. Take them responsibility.
Right. Hard to make everybody accept that responsibility.
And it is.
And you, and you can see where it's getting us, so.
And, and it does, yes.
One thing I, and this is really abbreviated version, so I got, and Lynn can speak to this better. I, I've had experience over in the Metroplex area with the TRN program. It, short answer to that is yes, it's nonprofit. In an ideal situation, it doesn't cost the city. The city never really interacts with the nonprofit groups. They do work, it's, it takes time, it takes a couple of years for spay and neuter and releasing to catch up. That's one thing. We've also worked with, and I guess I'll couch it this way, since I've been here, I've talked to various nonprofit groups in, in the larger areas. I had the state of Texas come in and look at the kennel, do, uh, kind of an informal audit, made some improvements. Uh, we've made some drastic improvements with the pay, uh, thanks to Ramon and Leanne, previous city managers being supportive of that. Make drastic, drastic improvements with, with the quality, uh, you know, of equipment and everything, based off their support and stuff. So, so that part, we, we, we've made leaps and bounds in terms of that, yes. Understandably, it is a difficult job. We worked with and continue to work with various nonprofit groups. Uh, one of our local vets for a period of time, they were actually expanding neuter for free. But they could only do that for a period of time, or else it starts costing no money. So we had that discussion with them. Uh, there was a group, I'll put it in perspective, our last animal control employee within the nine months, we had taken in approximately three hundred dogs, two hundred and seventy-five were placed out of state by a nonprofit group that did not cost the city a penny. They were spayed or neutered, cleaned, vaccinated, and literally flown to out of state, uh, homes. Twenty-five of those sadly for health reasons and, uh, you know, were unsustainable. We did have to euthanize because that was the most humane thing to do. But three hundred were taken in, two hundred and seventy-five we were able to place. And that was through work with nonprofit groups that we've had, you know, dialogue with, uh, over a period of time. So, so the conversation is there is the only reason I'm, I'm saying that. And yes, it, it is one of those things that we thought about different ideas and different, uh, ways to stay in front of it because it needs to take two sides. It has to take enforcement piece of it, because as the city manager's saying, there has to be some accountability and ownership, literally and figuratively, but there also has to be some education. But, you know, the, the educational piece of it is hard to get to when you're trying to keep your head off the water. So, so that's kind of the scenario that we need to look at, is how do we get to where we can be proactive as opposed to reactive as well? And again, I, I don't know what the silver bullet is, there's several different ways we can look at. And, you know, I have a, have another follow-up discussion about it. But like I said, there, there's multiple things out there. Uh, one of the things that puts us at a disadvantage, and I think you can, you know, kind of second this too. In this part of the state, there's not a whole lot of nonprofits that will come and set up the traps and do, do a lot of it. I know, um, you know, one of the bigger cities, uh, in, in the area, I would name them, uh, just, just because it was a discussion I had with the person that oversaw their operations, because I call them myself, that they fund a part of that. But they also have some MOUs with some smaller cities to help do the funding, that they buy the traps. And we, we bought and funded the traps. We, we, like I said, we've made drastic improvements on equipment, pay, you know, you name it, uh, over the last couple of years or so. To, to make that job attractive and try to attract and retain folks. But yes, it is a difficult job when somebody gets sensitive. Again, I don't know what the silver bullet is, is that we've had discussions, Ramon and I and Leanne and I, you know, about possibly, you know, potentially hiring somebody part-time or something like that, you know? For where we've got a full-time person and then when that person's off, the part-time person fills in on their days off. So we've got seven days a week in theory, and, and different things. I mean, that, those are just the discussions to try to combat the problem and then try to implement some educational programs as well. So I'll move, move, move my, uh, proverbial soapbox out of the way, just wanted to at least kind of offer that, put that in there as part of the information.
And I do have a little, it's just a personal opinion about the job, um, of why there's such a high turnover. Um, maybe having it, the animal control and code enforcement being the same thing, maybe it gets too, to be too much if that position was separated where someone's an animal control officer and that's what they did, take care of the animal. And then you have code enforcement. Because you have people, uh, speak myself, um, that I catch cats and dogs at my house. I even keep dogs at my house right now until I find, find their homes. But, um, I did apply, but the code enforcement part did scare me a little bit. Because there's a lot of people that the confrontation is not okay, it scares. And we would like to help with the animal control, help keep people safe, all that. But the code enforcement, it just makes it a lot. And then if we're over here doing code enforcement, but there's ten dogs over here that can't be picked up because there's not another person, it's, it puts a lot of stress. And then obviously there's people that are, people are always mad at you, so it makes that too. So if there was a way to like maybe separate it or get a partner or something like that, to where they're not the same thing and there's code enforcement, there's animal control, would probably be a lot easier. That's other than.
And that sounds real good in a perfect world.
Yeah, in a perfect world, yes.
From, from our side of the, of the cabinet here, we don't have so many dollars in what we have as far as hiring a person. And we have to try to budget that as good as we can. Sometimes we're just real limited on how far that dollar stretches.
Yeah.
And that's the reason, one of the big reasons that it's one of the same.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us discuss it further as a board.
Okay.
I don't know what, what has to happen, is it on the agenda or have a special meeting or what, I don't know.
Why don't we do that on next month's agenda? We all have a special meeting, uh, when that can be closed, I don't know. We can, uh, whatever y'all think, but we can have a special meeting and just sit down and talk about that. Agree on how we might start to make, make a difference.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is no perfect answer.
Yeah, there's no perfect answer.
You know, if we, we wanted to pay for that spay and neuter, and I can see where it costs the city a quarter million dollars a year, really easy. We can't do that. Uh, but there, there has to be some answers somewhere. Whether it's two different personnel, whether it's pay raised to make it worth their time, or we don't lose somebody in thirty days. Uh, there, there's got to be somewhere that we can make a difference, so. If you'll allow us to do that, and then we will get back with you and, and, and we might even like to use comes a meeting too, and, and we'll contact you beforehand. Because other ideas are always good.
Hmm.
And, uh, I, I can see that you dealt with this problem for a while.
Yeah, and I try to help this.
Yeah, I think. But if you'll allow us to do that, we'll, uh, I'll be in touch with you personally. We'll see what we can do next month at, at the meeting and we'll, we'll talk about that further. Okay. So until then, just bear with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank God, thank you.
I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan, for coming.
Yeah.
I will be in touch.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing I would do, we're gonna move right along. The approval of minutes of the council meeting November the eighth of twenty twenty. Uh, didn't have one in December, so let's approve the minutes of the November meeting, and I'll make a motion, we do that. Do we have a second? Is there any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is consider the resolution number R seven six eight, day zero one two one, authorizing the submission of a coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program grant application. And, uh, Ramon, I'll let you raise up the date on that application.
Sure, Mayor. Uh, basically, what the resolution says, this authorizes the city to submit an application to the office of the governor, um, for a coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. And what it is, it, it's a reimbursement, uh, I believe the grant's of fifteen, up to fifteen thousand dollars. And then we use them P B E equipment. Uh, we're looking at, uh, modifying, uh, something in the building or P D, uh, the entrance or the window, that's what we're looking at. Basically what it does is just gives us the opportunity to update it.
All right. Do you may have any questions about that grant application?
Make a motion and pass the review.
Second. Make a motion in two seconds to, uh, consider that resolution. Is there any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do, to do is to consider, discuss, and approve an amendment, an amendment to the agreement between the city of Mioshu and Public Management Incorporated for Housing Provider Services to the Mioshu Housing Reconstruction Assistance Program, Home, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Glad that's not all abbreviations. And, uh, yeah, tell us about that.
Okay. Uh, like you say, Mayor, this is an amendment to the existing public agreement that we have with Public Management right now. Uh, there were some modifications that were made to the available funding. And what this does, it actually reflects this funding. We have an existing agreement with, for them, uh, with them for the home grant, uh, home grant program. Uh, we're, are probably halfway through that program right now. So this also, this agreement, uh, extends the time.
Come on, is it here?
Yes.
All right. Cool. Hope everybody understands that. Make a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement? We have a motion in a second to, uh, approve that amendment to that agreement. Is there any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, motion carries. The next thing we'd like to do is to consider an ordinance, number zero five two four, day zero one two one, which allows us to adopt a rate charged for bulk water services. And this is for services that come down of the fire hydrants.
Yes, it's bulk water.
At your house.
Yeah, it's bulk water, uh, and it mostly is used by contractors. Uh, and what this does, it establishes a rate, there's no one in our current ordinance, so that's what it does. Um, like I said, it is mostly used by contractors, so.
I'll make a motion when we need to pass it. Say it. I'll say it. We have a motion and a second to, uh, approve that ordinance, adopting rates charged for bulk water services. Is there any other discussion? I have one question. Do we have much call from, uh, from farmers and stuff like that to fill up large water tanks?
No.
No?
One, two, and one, you might get some like.
Very soon.
Very soon. Uh, this is mostly anybody that's doing some boring, uh, some road work and all that, that's mostly who this will affect.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, motion carries. Now, we'd like to consider ordinance number zero five two five, day zero one two one, that allows us to amend the fee schedule of the collective ordinance for charging for that bulk water sales.
Correct.
So, uh. What's the rate right now?
Right now, the way it's, we don't have an ordinance for that, so right now it's set to, uh, just like you would at your house. So there's a reason that's what we're looking at.
So this establishes a minimum of eighteen dollars plus ten cents per gallon. For however much they want.
Just.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve that ordinance. Do we have a second? Any other questions for discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, motion carries. Next thing I'd like to do is to, uh, receive the investment summary and financial statement for the month ending December thirty-first, end of the year. I trust you all know with that, and, uh, I'll make a motion, we approve that, uh, financial statement.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any questions about the financial statement? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, motion carries. That leads us to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chamber of Commerce had a Christmas parade, uh, what they call a reverse parade, uh, it's the first time. Had a great turnout, uh, hopefully it's something they consider in the next year or beyond. It was kind of small, but great turnout.
And next year will be normal, we can, uh, have a regular parade.
But, but for, they, they made work and it, it's, it's. But, but for, they, they made a work and it, it is great. Say, city mutual employees, they donated two thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars to the Bay County Food pantry and delivered approximately fifteen hundred meals to the Meals on Wheels program. We offered a payroll deduction for our employees and we had great participation. We collected twenty nine hundred dollars and that is great, you know, aggressively to our employees and that.
That's big add for.
Next thing, I want to thank Bay County Department of Fire, Area, Buffalo, Excel Energy, the Labor Works Department on the Christmas decorations. Put it in love, put it right down. Lots of comments, we had a, we had a little culture this year, so it was great, it was great. Next, Texas Department of Agriculture, it's important that we have been approved for planning and capacity building of our award to the Texas CDVG. What that is, is a, it's a grant. They look to do a, a long-term planning, comprehensive plan. What they will entail is they will look at the city and see what the needs are. Anywhere from water to housing to road construction conditions. So it's, it gives us a tool to look into the future. And it will take anywhere from eighteen months to two years to complete that, that study, so. We were notified that we need more water. Next, January thirteenth is the first day to file for a place in the city of Mioshu ballot for the main first election. This time the mayor will be elected on this election. It starts on the thirteenth, it goes through the twelfth, February the twelfth.
And what's the last day?
The twelfth, February the twelfth.
February?
Yes, sir. And it's almost a month, or a month. And that's coming up this week. Next thing, this week, there will be free COVID nineteen testing, not the vaccine, but the testing at Coliseum, Thursday and Friday. Hopefully that this has been provided by the state. I know Gary and Kevin from the MS are involved in this. So it's a no to anybody, but it's going to be Thursday and Friday from two to four. But it is the testing, so.
Hope people will take advantage of that.
Yes, sir. And that's all I have.
All right. That leads us to the American Council remarks. I want to thank the city employees for changing all those light bulbs in all the city for decorations. You know, it used to be all clear. So somebody did a lot of light bulb changing, so we want to thank you guys for doing that.
You really look nice.
Yeah, and congratulations to them for donating all that money and, and providing all those meals. And I think that's a really neat thing, so, really cool. In the break of school, all those kids missing all that candy that's used to. Yeah. Ryan didn't get a chance to tell you, we appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Ryan.
Keeping us out of trouble.
What I'm here for.
One thing you might take a look at is the baling program in animal control. Let us know if that's a possibility.
We'll, we'll look into it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All right, and why don't you put that on next month's agenda for us to take some time and talk about some way to help in that problem?
It can be done in close session or it can be done in some to y'all, okay?
It's, that's the way we need to do it, that's okay?
We don't have to do it in close session, but it is some to y'all, you know?
We can do it by special invitation, just the council and Lynn.
On a close session, you can invite it.
Oh, okay. You can do that. We'll do a close session.
I think I would suggest close session where I allow you the opportunity to talk freely.
Yes, that'd be a good idea. All right. Rest of the council have anything? A new year. Got everybody making time, be careful, be safe. And thanks again for everybody being, we are here. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.